Good evening, we're going to call this workshop to order. Today is the 24th and it is 6:00 PM. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a courtroom, but we do have three counselors which are out, but we are good to go tonight, but we'll do a roll call. Deacon?
Here.
Thomas?
Yeah.
Gabit is absent, Watson's here, Gardner's excused, Parmelo's excused, and Mr. Christie.
Present.
For present. Tonight's business is we're going to see a presentation from EcoMaine, so whenever you guys are ready, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Roach and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about EcoMaine and its relationship with the town of Standish. I serve as a general manager. I brought two friends, colleagues along with me today, Bee Johnson in the background, she works in our outreach and education department, and also Catherine Oak, and she works on community development. So, she works very closely with towns and bringing towns into the EcoMaine family. So, happy to take questions along the way if you have them, although they may come up in the presentation, but we'll keep it as informal as we can, so feel free just to interrupt and ask. So, who is EcoMaine? Just to make sure that everybody's familiar with who we are, we're a quasi municipal, non-for-profit organization, a 501(c)(3), we're municipally owned. We have seventy-four member communities, twenty of them are owners, and so that leaves fifty-four are on contract with those owner communities. So, that's how it works. We have actually two towns in New Hampshire as well, so just over the border. Our mission statement I think best describes us, and that is that we provide comprehensive, long-term, solid waste solutions in a safe, environmentally responsible, economically sound manner, and we are a leader in raising public awareness of sustainable waste management strategies. And I think that the end of that is really what sets us apart from other similar organizations, and that is our focus and our priority to our communities and connecting with our communities so that they know who we are, what we do, so that they participate in our programs. And we really get really, really good positive feedback from our member communities. Down at the bottom there is the state of Maine as in state statute, the waste hierarchy. It's also in EPA guidance, and many other states have this waste hierarchy too, and that is we want to focus on every, all the decisions we make, that we, the priority is reduce, reuse, and then recycling, and then compost and digestion, and then waste to energy. And if you can't utilize one of those rungs, then that's when you utilize your landfill. And so, we live by this ordinance, and we feel like it's very important in our decision-making process. So, these are our member communities, all seventy-four of them, and you can see, we are scared about a bit. It's, towns join our organization by, you know, they volunteer to join, so they don't have to join. Nobody has to be a part of EcoMaine, and so that's why we're out there recruiting new members. Just twenty years ago, we had twenty member communities. So, over the last twenty years, we've really grown from twenty to seventy-four. So, what do we do? Well, we have facilities and programs that help us manage the waste. The first facility is our recycling facility, which we installed a single-sort recycling facility in 2006. Back in 2006, eighty-five percent of what we took in as recyclables were something that you may have never heard of, and that's newspapers. So, it was a newspaper-based system, and then we added packaging as well, plastic, metal, and glass, to the newspapers to make it that single-sort program. But, we really started with newspapers, and back then we didn't have nearly as much boxes or cardboard either. So, it's amazing to me, being in the industry as long as I have, how the industry has really changed, and newspapers have all but disappeared. There's a few left, but certainly not many. In addition to the recycling facility right next door, we have the waste-to-energy facility. That is where we combust waste for energy recovery. In that facility, we also recover metal. So, anything that is in the waste stream, not in the recycling stream, but somebody throws away in the waste stream, if it's metal and it's ferrous, we're actually taking that out after we combust the material. So, that's kind of an interesting component of our program that people don't even realize. We also have a food waste recovery program, Little Tiny, we're in partnership with Exeter Biofuels. Little Tiny, Exeter, Maine actually is on the national map for this facility. It's actually larger than the picture that you see here, they now have three digesters, but they have a co-digestion program up there where they mix food waste about fifty-fifty with agricultural animal waste. So, it's mostly cow manure, so they have one of the larger dairy farms up there, and so we produce the food waste here, we ship it up to there, goes into a digester for about twenty, twenty-four days or so, and the bugs eat all that manure and food waste, they generate gas, goes into an engine generator, and they generate electricity. So, awesome program, and what they also do is, once the gas is taken out, the energy's taken out of that food waste, they then dry the material and take the solids out, reuse that as bedding for the cows, and they also utilize the liquid fraction for fertilizer on the hayfields. So, a hundred percent of it is utilized through that process, with the exception of any kind of contamination, a lot of it being plastic, that comes back to us for combustion, and we burn the plastic for energy recovery. And then finally, we also have a landfill. We, it's labeled here as an Asheville landfill, it is a permitted landfill, however, we predominantly use it for landfilling ash. And that, I have a picture here, but it's located in Westbrook, South Portland, and in Scarborough, all three towns. What does our education and outreach look like? Well, Bee can talk about these programs much better than I can, but they do an excellent job at connecting with the schools, community events. We have a curbside inspection and tagging program, and of course, these days we have digital and social media. And all of these programs really, as I mentioned before, help to encourage recycling, encourage composting, and food waste recovery, and reduce the waste streams as much as we possibly can. We do this through a number of different programs and campaigns. Here's just a few of them that are popular within our communities. Our social and digital media, our contacts are almost three hundred thousand, and we're really reaching place people through Instagram, YouTube, Facebook. Obviously, not everybody, that's not our entire audience, but it is one fraction that's certainly growing, and we expect will continue to grow. As far as education goes, sixty-four thousand personal touches last year, at a hundred and seven at events, facility tours, presentations, and virtual tours. We feel if you spend, or we spend, thirty minutes or sixty minutes with you, as we're doing tonight, that you will talk about this, and you will become advocates of good, solid waste management practices. So, we're hoping that that'll continue right out of this meeting. What we have seen, and there was a conflicting article this morning that you may have seen on recycling of plastics, but, you know, domestic demand for recyclable material is indeed on the rise. We're seeing more and more investments across the country, domestic demand actually increasing because the public generally favors fiber packaging, paper packaging, over plastic packaging. There's still a place and a purpose for plastic, there's a purpose and a place for glass and metal and other types of packaging materials, but in particular, we're seeing growth in fiber packaging because the public, you know, wants it. They want to see their material come in in a readily recyclable package, as opposed to something that might not be readily recyclable. So, an example of that, we saw for a while that, for a while, that Amazon was first delivering in a cardboard box, and then they began to switch to a plastic bag, and the public couldn't recycle that plastic bag. You could barely open the bag, you had to basically cut it open with scissors. But now, we're seeing a trend back to fiber packaging again, where they're putting it in a paper or some type of fiber packaging so that it can be recycled easily within our community programs. So, that's what this slide kind of says, is we're seeing good news on the recycling front, and I'm convinced, because of the investments that are being made by packaging companies, I mean, these are multi-million dollar investments that they're making on fiber packaging, and I can only assume that that'll continue. They know what their consumers want, and they'll continue to do that. We're seeing growth over the last year in the value of the recycle, recycling commodities that we're accepting. Here, you can see where cardboard's been, so this is, we call it OCC, or old corrugated cardboard. A year ago, it was in the sixties, and now we're maintaining over a hundred dollars a ton for the material. You can see mixed paper a year ago was actually negative because we had to ship it to market. So, there's a shipping component, and that's how it goes negative, and then, you know, if you can get something on the other side when it's delivered to a paper mill, that's obviously a bonus on top. Twenty years ago, we shipped all our paper to Maine mills, and because there was, you know, that was a line item that was being produced right here in Maine. That all ended when the newspaper markets dried, started to dry up, the paper market started to dry up, and there's been a huge, a huge shift from making paper to making paper packaging. So, that's been the change over the last twenty years. You can see plastics have increased in value, and this side's a good slide because you can see the dark green, which is the top number. So, that's going to be your HDPE, natural plastic. So, think your gallon water jugs, or your gallon milk jugs, that cloudy, looks like a white cloud, that's that material. When I got into the industry back thirty-five years ago, I had to pay to send that to a recycler. Today, it's worth almost a thousand dollars a ton. Nobody is going to throw that material away with that kind of value, so I can assure you that certain plastic packaging, notably number ones, which is PET, and number twos, which is HDPE, are in fact, if they're going into the recycling bin and they make it to our place, they are in fact being recycled, because with that kind of value, nobody's going to throw that material away. And then you can see where the metal markets have been, the top one is aluminum, and the dark green on the bottom there is you're going to be your steel or bi-metal cans. So, that gives you a little flavor of what the recycling markets have been like. Recently, we did a waste characterization study, so what we do here, believe it or not, is we start taking samples of the waste that came into our facility, could come from Standish. But, we have a staff that sorts and separates all the different items in the waste stream into all those bins that you see there. If you're interested in volunteering, we'll happily accept your time, but it's a tough job, but somebody's got to do it. And we do this every so often. That's one of the reasons why we haven't done it since 2011, because it's not a job that everybody likes to do. So, here we are, many years later, because we want to update on what the waste stream looks like and how it's changed over time. But you can see where the major components are. The last time around, organics making up the largest component of the waste stream, can you imagine that? That's going to be your food waste, yard waste, other organic material. Hopefully, most paper's being recycled, but some of it is being thrown in the waste stream, and then plastics, plastics tends to be smaller weight-wise because obviously it's light. One of the things that a lot of our communities are not familiar with yet is extended producer responsibility. And when I talked to your staff, your team, a few weeks ago on this, and they made the invitation for EcoMaine to come here to present to you, this was one of the things that we talked about, and they were obviously very interested. So, extended producer responsibility, or for short, we call it EPR, was passed by the Maine legislature in July of 2021. It is a policy approach that assigns greater responsibility to producers for the end-life and the management of waste, of their materials, of their products. And in particular, this is a packaging EPR program, so it really focuses on packaging as opposed to the product itself. So, it shifts the responsibility that has been with municipalities over to the brands who are putting their products in this packaging, and basically says you're going to become responsible for the cost of recycling or disposing of the packaging that you're putting out in the marketplace. So, that's what EPR is all about. It is being developed, rulemaking just ended a few weeks ago, so we've been commenting, EcoMaine's been commenting, our staff has been commenting on those rules. It's now back in DEP's hands, they're going to finalize those rules, and we'll see what they finally look like, but we have a pretty good, because we've spent so much time with these rules, we have a good understanding of what they're going to look like. Basically, what it comes down to is, communities that offer a recycling program are eligible for reimbursements of the costs of running those recycling programs to a certain extent. This certain extent basically is for packaging. So, if you think of all the things that you put in your recycling bin, plastic, metal, and glass is basically all packaging, right? Cardboard boxes is all packaging. So, three-quarters of the material that you're putting into your bin is packaging material, but then you may have some leftover weekly newspapers, catalogs, magazines, junk mail, paper, office paper, those types of things. That's not packaging, that's not included, that's not eligible for reimbursement. But the lion's share of what consumers and residents are putting into their bins is eligible for reimbursement. The only entities that are eligible, however, are municipalities. So, me as a homeowner, I'm not eligible for any of my costs. If I have to drive to the transfer station, I'm not eligible for that cost. But municipalities are eligible for any costs at the transfer station, the cost of transferring the recyclable materials from the transfer station to EcoMaine, and then the cost to process those recyclable materials, in this case, at EcoMaine. In addition to that, even curbside collection costs, I know that you don't have curbside collection in the town, but if you did, like Gorham and like Limmington, if you had curbside, you would be eligible for reimbursement for those costs associated with the collection, curbside collection of those recyclable materials. A lot of people don't realize that they, those costs are eligible as well. They will be developing, so this might sound complicated, but they will be developing a stewardship organization, which they're calling, the acronym is, an SO, and the SO will manage this program. The SO will help municipalities comply with the program and participate in the program. So, there's going to be a lot of growing pains with this program, like any new program, but the bottle bill is a form of extended producer responsibility. So, the bottle redemption program that we're all kind of used to after all those years takes a lot of administration. People don't realize it, but there's a lot of administration in that program, and that's a form of EPR. This is another form of EPR. So, you know, they'll be
Thirty minutes or sixty minutes with you, as we're doing tonight, that you will talk about this and you will become advocates of good, solid waste management practices. So we're hoping that that'll continue right out of this meeting. What we have seen, and there was a conflicting article this morning that you may have seen on recycling of plastics. But, you know, domestic demand for recyclable material is indeed on the rise. We're seeing more and more investments across the country, domestic demand actually increasing. Because the public generally favors fiber packaging, paper packaging, over plastic packaging. There's still a place and a purpose for plastic, there's a purpose and a place for glass and metal and other types of packaging materials. But in particular, we're seeing growth in fiber packaging. Because the public, you know, wants it, they want to see their material come in in a readily recyclable package. As opposed to something that might not be readily recyclable. So an example of that. We saw for a while that, for a while, that Amazon was first delivering in a cardboard box. And then they began to switch to a plastic bag. And the public couldn't recycle that plastic bag. You could barely open the bag, you had to basically cut it open with a scissors. But now we're seeing a trend back to fiber packaging again, where they're putting it in a paper or some type of fiber packaging. So that it can be recycled easily within our community programs. So that's what this slide kinda says, is we're seeing good news on the recycling front. And I'm convinced, because of the investments that are being made by packaging companies. I mean, these are multi-million dollar investments that they're making on fiber packaging, and I can only assume that that'll continue. They know what their consumers want, and they'll continue to do that. We're seeing growth over the last year in the value of the recycle, recycling commodities that we're accepting here. You can see where cardboard's been, so this is, we call it OCC, or Old Corrugated Cardboard. A year ago, it was in the sixties, and now we're maintaining over a hundred dollars a ton for the material. You can see mixed paper, a year ago was actually negative, because we had to ship it to market. So there's a shipping component, and that's how it goes negative. And then, you know, if you can get something on the other side when it, when it's delivered to a paper mill, that's obviously a bonus on top. Twenty years ago, we shipped all our paper to Maine mills. And because there was, there was, you know, that was a line item that was being produced right here in Maine. That all ended when the newspaper markets dried, started to dry up, the paper market started to dry up. And there's been a huge, this huge shift from making paper to making paper packaging. So that's been the change over the last twenty years. You can see plastics have increased in value. And this, this slide's a good slide, because you can see the dark green, which is the top number. So that's gonna be your HDPE, natural plastic. So think your, your gallon water jugs, or your gallon milk jugs, that cloudy, looks like a white cloud. That's that material. When I got into the industry back thirty-five years ago, I had to pay to send that to a recycler. Today, it's worth almost a thousand dollars a ton. Nobody is gonna throw that material away with that kind of value. So I can assure you that certain plastic packaging, notably number ones, which is PET, and number twos, which is HDPE. Are, in fact, if they're going into the recycling bin and they make it to our place, they are in fact being recycled. Because with that kind of value, nobody's gonna throw that material away. And then you can see where the metal markets have been, the top one is aluminum. And the, and the dark green on the bottom there is, you're gonna be your steel or bi metal cans. So that gives you a little flavor of what the recycling markets have been like. Recently, we did a waste characterization study. So what we do here, believe it or not, is we start taking samples of the waste that came into our facility, could come from Standish. But we have a staff that sorts and separates all the different items in the waste stream into all those bins that you see there. If you're interested in volunteering, we'll happily accept your, your time. But it's a tough job, but somebody's gotta do it. And we do this every so often. That's one of the reasons why we haven't done it since two thousand eleven, because it's not a job that everybody likes to do. So here we are, many years later, because we wanna update on what the waste stream looks like and how it's changed over time. But you can see where the major components are, the last time around. Organics, making up the largest component of the waste stream, can, can you imagine that? That's gonna be your food waste, yard waste, other organic material. Hopefully, most papers being recycled, but some of it is being thrown in the waste stream. And then plastics, plastics tends to be smaller, weight-wise, because obviously it's light. One of the things that a lot of our communities are not familiar with yet is extended producer responsibility. And when I talked to your staff, your team, a few weeks ago on this, and they made the invitation for EcoMaine to come here to present to you. This was one of the things that we talked about, and they were obviously very interested. So extended producer responsibility, or for short, we call it EPR, was passed by the Maine Legislature in July of two thousand twenty-one. It is a policy approach that assigns greater responsibility to producers for the end life in the management of waste, of their materials, of their products. And in particular, this is a packaging EPR program. So it really focuses on packaging as opposed to the product itself. So it shifts the responsibility that has been with municipalities over to the brands who are putting their products in this packaging. And basically says, you're gonna become responsible for the cost of recycling or disposing of the packaging that you're putting out in the marketplace. So that's what EPR is, is all about. It is being developed, rulemaking just ended a few weeks ago. So we've been commenting, EcoMaine's been commenting, our staff has been commenting on those rules. It's now back in DEP's hands, they're gonna finalize those rules. And we'll see what they finally look like, but we have a pretty good, because we've spent so much, so much time with these rules. We have a good understanding of what they're going to look like. Basically, what it comes down to is, communities that offer a recycling program are eligible for reimbursements of the costs of running those recycling programs to a certain extent. The certain extent, basically, is for packaging. So if you think of all the things that you put in your recycling bin. Plastic, metal, and glass is basically all packaging, right? Cardboard boxes is all packaging. So three-quarters of the material that you're putting into your bin is packaging material. But then you may have some leftover weekly newspapers, catalogs, magazines, junk mail, paper, office paper, those types of things. That's not packaging, that's not included, that's not eligible for reimbursement. But the lion's share of what consumers and residents are putting into their bins is eligible for reimbursement. The only entities that are eligible, however, are municipalities. So me, as a homeowner, I'm not eligible for any of my costs. If I have to drive to the transfer station, I'm not eligible for that cost. But municipalities are eligible for any costs at the transfer station. The cost of transferring the recyclable materials from the transfer station to EcoMaine. And then the cost to process those recyclable materials, in this case, at EcoMaine. In addition to that, even curbside collection costs. I know that you don't have curbside collection in the town, but if you did, like Gorham and like Leamington, if you had curbside, you would be eligible for reimbursement for those costs associated with the collection, curbside collection, of those recyclable materials. A lot of people don't realize that they, those costs are eligible as well. They will be developing, so this might sound complicated. But they will be developing a stewardship organization, which they're calling, the acronym is, an SO. And the SO will manage this program. The SO will help municipalities comply with the program and participate in the program. So there's gonna be a lot of growing pains with this program, like any new program. But the bottle bill is a form of extended producer responsibility. So the bottle redemption program that we're all kind of used to after all those years, takes a lot of administration. People don't realize it, but there's a lot of administration in that program. And that, that's a form of EPR, this is another form of, of EPR. So, you know, they'll be there, and according to the rules, they'll be there to assist the program and manage the program so that it is successful at the end of the day. But I will say, I'm sure that there will be growing pains. And a lot of the data that is gonna be required for this program is data that we collect. So we collect, we have all your tons, we know how many tons of trash you have, we know how many tons of recyclables you have. We can break down the recyclables into plastic, metal, glass, paper, cardboard, all that data is available to us. You have your costs, so the town is gonna be, is very aware of how much it costs you to run these programs. And those are the costs that you will be eligible for reimbursement for. So when, when is this gonna happen? Well, it's coming, and it's coming soon. In two thousand twenty-seven, you will be eligible to get reimbursements for twenty, calendar year, two thousand twenty-six expenses. So it's not far away, and that's why we're having this conversation now, and why staff thought it was so important to have this conversation as soon as possible. So I'm gonna move on, and we can come back to, hold your questions for that product stewardship program. Because I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. But before I get there is, in concert with this new program, EcoMaine is building a new recycling facility. Why? Because our old system, which is now twenty years old, was built to sort newspapers. And without newspapers, the system does not really function the way it was designed. We need something that's going to be able to sort and separate packaging material. So this is actually a picture of, of, an overhead of the facilities. You can see the old, MRF stands for Materials Recovery Facility, and the current Waste-to-Energy Facility. We have now entered into a long-term lease with that new MRF, which is located right along the turnpike there. It's a fifty thousand square foot facility, you can see it there below. So we're gonna recycle this facility, it's been vacant for some time now. And since it was so close to our infrastructure, so close to our scale house, and our maintenance shop and everything else. We're building the new facility right there at that campus. So we do have a forty-year lease on that building. My suspicion is that someday we'll probably, the communities will probably own it. So this is a model of, of the equipment, of the new equipment that's going to go into this facility. Labor has been a very, a big challenge, as it is, has been for everybody. But it's also been a big challenge for us, getting people to sort and separate trash and recyclable materials is a difficult, is a difficult proposition. And so the, the technology that's available today that sorts and separates these items is much more advanced than it was twenty years ago. There's a thing called optical sortation, which uses infrared technology to identify the product, the different types of products that cross the, the assembly line, the conveyor belts. And then uses air to basically separate, throws the plastic over here and, and the paper over here, and the different types of plastics are all sorted and separated. We do use mechanical screens, and we still do use some labor to do some of the sorting. Most of the labor, though, is focused on quality control, cleaning up the mistakes that the optical sorters actually make. So the, by and large, the bulk of the material is gonna be automated, automatically sorted and separated. These MRFs, these new rendition of these MRFs are really going, are exploding across the country. Because everybody's in the same boat, everybody had a newspaper-based system, and now we're all switching to a packaging-based system. So here's, here's your, your experience over the last ten years. The top line up there is your waste stream. The middle line there is your recycling stream, and the bottom line there is your, your bulky waste. I'll kinda focus on the waste, the municipal solid waste and the recycling. But you can see that your waste stream has, has grown a bit, and that's probably because there's been a few homes that have been added around town, and perhaps some businesses as well. And, and recycling has decreased. And that might be a reflection of the disappearance of newspapers and the lightweighting of packaging. So these bottles used to be thicker and heavier, and now after you drink them, you know, they'll probably fall right over with a little bit of wind. So that, that's happened. But a lot of it is, we're, we're just not seeing any newspapers in the mix, as I've mentioned a couple times now. But this is an example of where you really wanna focus your, your energies when it comes to reimbursements through the EPR program. Because at the bottom there, you can see what your recycling rate has been over the last ten years. And, you know, in two thousand fourteen, your, your rate was about seventeen percent, you were recycling seventeen percent of your waste. And now you're down to about ten percent. So, you know, what are other communities doing? Well, we have communities that are close to forty, fifty percent of their waste stream is being recycled. So there's room for improvement, and we're here to help you do that. And by improving, by moving from that green, by moving from that top line down to the recycling line. That's what's gonna provide eligibility for reimbursements of those costs associated with recycling. Because you're not gonna be reimbursed by and large for those solid waste management costs. But you will be reimbursed for a proportion, a large proportion of your recycling costs. So that's a dynamic, I think, that you, you could easily improve, I believe you could get that ten percent. You know, up to, you know, you could at least double it and get it to twenty, you could probably get to thirty percent without too much pain. And perhaps you could even grow from there. This shows you an example of, of what your opportunity is. So this basically maxes out every community at thirty percent recycling. Like I said, some communities are upward toward forty to fifty percent recycling, but we just use thirty percent. So that's why you see some communities, like Gorham. You can see, if you look at Gorham, they're all in orange, they're already at thirty percent recycling. Portland's already at thirty percent recycling, and, and so forth and so on. But you can see communities that have an opportunity to increase, to move materials from their waste stream over to the recycling stream. And, and I think that the Town of Standish has a huge opportunity to take advantage of that. And now that we're gonna have this financial incentive to do so, I think it's all the more reason to focus on, on improving recovery. And getting that rate up above ten percent towards twenty to thirty percent. So here's an example of what, you know, what I've just outlined to you, of where you're at now, and where you could be if you went to thirty percent. I just also wanted to mention where our landfill was. We do own and operate a landfill, mostly what we're putting into that landfill is the ash. When we combust the waste, we actually get a ninety percent reduction in the volume of waste that we actually have to landfill. So our landfill, you know, the fact that, you know, we're, we're in South Portland, in Westbrook, in Scarborough, and only two miles from the city of Portland, is, is a reflection of the volume reduction that we've gotten from the Waste-to-Energy Facility over the last thirty-five, thirty-six years. Had we not had the Waste-to-Energy Facility, that landfill would be huge, it would be ten times the size as it is today. But the reality of it is, we would have outgrown our footprint there, and we too would have been shipping our waste to faraway places. But we don't ship our waste to faraway places because we have that capacity. And it's pretty unique, really, across the country, that we have that kind of capacity still available to us that close to the, the urban areas. So that's, that's unique. What's also interesting about this is, obviously, the Gorham Connector that's been in the paper quite a bit lately. That goes right, we're actually the largest landowner as far as who the turnpike would have to consume in order to put that bypass in, because it runs, we have two hundred and sixty acres out there, and it runs all along our property on the landfill. Doesn't go over the landfill, but it does go, you can see there around it. This, this, this shot actually shows you, the turnpike there is in, their, their plan is to go in blue there. And you can see how it goes right around our landfill cells. We do have future expansion, right now we have permitted for another twenty years. But if we continue to operate the Waste-to-Energy Facility and get that ninety percent reduction in the waste volume. We expect that we will apply for permits that will allow this landfill to last thirty years beyond the twenty years that I just mentioned as permitted. So that'll get us to fifty to sixty years of permitted space. Again, a huge, a huge benefit to us, but we wanna use that space wisely. We only want to put in that landfill that waste that has to go in there. We wanna pull more recyclables out, so we don't waste that space, so that future generations can benefit from having that landfill space available to them as well. So Standish, you know, is at a crossroads, I think, because you're coming to an end of a twenty-year agreement with EcoMaine. So that agreement will end in two thousand twenty-seven. And I hope that the town feels that it's been a good relationship. We worked hard on developing that relationship and have worked closely with the town over the last twenty years. But one of the things that the owner communities are wanting to know is, are there other communities that wanna become owners? So on either side of you, Gorham is an owner community, Leamington is an owner community, Windham is an owner community, Hollis is an owner community. So you have several neighboring communities that have become owners. And I just kinda wanted to put out there, is, is that something that the Town of Standish is interested, in, interested in exploring? So why would you wanna become an owner community? We have no problem if you don't, if you wanna remain a contract community, that's, that's obviously a choice that the town has. But we feel it offers, it's a win-win, it's a win for our owner communities, and it's a win for the town too. Why? Because it offers stability, it offers a longer-term strategy, and you control your future. Our communities set the tipping fees. So I do a lot of managing and a lot of recommending, but I don't get a vote. And so the, the owner communities are, are on the Board of Directors, and they decide what, what, they govern the organization and decide what our tipping fees are going to be. You build equity in, in the system. So some of your tipping fees goes into the equity of, of building a plant. So it's, you know, it's the rent versus the own model, and, and where would you rather be? And actually getting some kind of return on that investment, on the tipping fee that you're making. You, you become eligible for a revenue, for a partner in the revenue opportunities. So an example of that, our recycling facility, we take in commercial cardboard, this is outside the community program. So we take in commercial cardboard from supermarkets, from industry, from, from, you know, all types of businesses. From the retail establishments, you know, Walmarts and Best Buys, they have a lot of cardboard. So we take that in that cardboard, we, we, we process the material, we bail the material, and we sell the material. And our owners take that, take advantage of, of that partnership together to offer those types of programs. Our, we're a hundred percent transparent, you wanna know, even now, today, you wanna know anything about EcoMaine. Because we're a quasi-municipal, because we're community-owned, everything's on the table. All you have to do is ask for it. Regionalization, if you believe that regionalization works, we're interested in growing our region in order to establish a greater economy of scale. In this business, in the trash, in recycling business, the economy of scale really works to your favor. You can't build a Waste-to-Energy Plant with one town's trash. You can't build a recycling plant with one town's amount of recyclable materials. You can't build a digester with one town's, a, a food waste material. So collectively together, that's when you can build good infrastructure for best practices. You have representation on the more main board of, on the EcoMaine Board of Directors, you are a decision-maker. Our owner communities, as I mentioned, set their own rates, and we do a lot of lobbying, both at the federal and the state level, on improving solid waste policy, to really get, improve the, the recovery of waste materials and put them into those rungs of the hierarchy that I mentioned before. And, and that's where they belong, whether it's recyclables, or food waste, or reusable products. So that's my presentation to you. I'm kinda leaving you with this kind of question that you kinda have to, you know, mull over for, for, for a while. And that is, where do you wanna go after two thousand twenty-seven? Do you wanna sign a new contract? Do you not wanna be in, in business of providing waste services to the community? Do you, do you want to be, explore becoming an owner community? You have a lot of options in front of you. Our communities are hoping that you will partner with the owner communities so that we can continue to grow with the Town of Standish. On that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. At the very beginning, you said there were three types of members, but you didn't explain what the differences were. Owner, associate, and contractor. Where Standish is an associate, what does that mean?
So, the, our contract communities and our associates basically are the same with one exception. And that is, twenty years ago, we called them associates, and today, we're calling them contracts. The other thing that's a little bit different is, is the, the associates, what they have in common, they're, they were all twenty-year agreements. What we found, you know, after the Great Recession back in two thousand seven was, communities weren't all that excited about signing, signing long-term contracts. There was just so much uncertainty in the world back then, that they wanted, you know, one- and two- and three-year contracts. And so we, you know, that was what was being demanded, so we offered one, two, and three-year contracts. I don't advise it, I think, I, I don't think it's a good policy, because you're only looking out for the next two or three years. But that's what those associates had in common, were, we had seven associate members, and they all had twenty-year agreements. The other thing that's changed, in addition to that, is back in, back in two thousand twenty-six, when we were negotiating and developing those contracts. I guess they were actually signed in twenty twenty, in two thousand seven, yeah, two thousand seven, sorry. Was that, back then, we were subsidizing recycling programs across the board, municipalities were. So the cost of recycling was in the tipping fee for trash, for municipal solid waste, MSW. And so our owners did that, they charged themselves nothing for recycling. Our associate, same thing, we charged nothing for recycling. And because recycling was still in its infancy, and we wanted to incentivize recycling. Twenty years later, what we found was, recycling is no longer in its infancy, it's more in maturity. Most towns are willing to pay for recycling now, because they realize it does cost money to recycle. However, it's better than putting the recyclable materials and storing them in a waste landfill forever. And so they saw the value to that, to that, but they wanted to understand the true cost of recycling. And as we began to plan for EPR, Extended Producer Responsibility, in order to get the reimbursements, you gotta pay for something. And so we wanted to begin to recognize that cost. So that's the one thing that's gonna change for the town, is that, that we no longer are, are internalizing or subsidizing the cost of recycling. There's a, there's a hefty tipping fee associated with recycling. On the flip side, we sell the recyclable materials, that's a dynamic market, just like the market, just like the stock market. And it's somewhat cyclical. So right now, we're in a very good period, but it could come down, and it could go up. So nobody, it's a wild card, don't bet on it, don't plan on it, but it is going to help recyclable programs going forward.
Can you put the slide back up that showed the recycling rates for, that were thirty, that one, the one with the orange and the blue? Nope, back. The, that's one, yes. So the towns that are achieving over that thirty percent potential. Are those towns that are charging for trash bags?
Let's, well, let's take a look, so.
So in essence, the residents can recycle for free, but anything that they wanna throw away, they would need to pay, purchase trash bags?
Are they paid, all of them are paid to throw, yeah, yeah, it looks like they are, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're part of MSAD six, one of the, perhaps the third-largest school district in the state. And some of our member towns are already part of this arrangement. Our school, how do school districts, we're concerned about our tax rate. So, you know, this, this is a part of it, school districts are part of our tax rate. How do school districts play in this? Is there a difference in the way school districts in, say, Gorham, which are owned by the community as a single, single entity, versus regional school districts are treated? Are schools are big, they, they produce trash, how are they treated?
So some towns, some towns include schools in the, in their town tipping fees, and some towns don't. So every town seems to do it a little bit differently. But I will say that some towns will get school district waste, and the town will cover it. Other towns say, no, the school district has to pay for it themselves.
We are a regional school district with five towns, how do other regionals handle it?
I'd have to look that up, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look that up, I don't know off the top of my head. All I know is that is what I just said, and that is, some towns allow school districts to tip under their account and some don't.
You said Fry Island is a member, Limington is a member, Hollis is a member, Standish is a member, is Buxton?
Buxton is not a member, yeah.
Buxton is not. So that's something to maybe discuss, because we would want to reduce the cost of our school district, which will ultimately affect our tax rate. So having the fourth largest school district in the state as a member of this might be important.
Well, certainly with EPR, and that'll be an interesting dynamic, and I don't know if that's in the rules or not, but if school district, if the town is expensing the cost for the school district's waste, then whether that's eligible or not, I would have to look that up. Do you know offhand?
Yeah, that would be, that would be covered.
You have to come up to the mic, just so people on TV can hear you talk.
So I think, I think that's an interesting question.
If you wait to say your name, so we know who you are.
Catherine Oak, EcoMaine. And that's an interesting question, what you're asking about the RSUs, because I think the regional school districts, from what I've seen, they are typically budgeting waste and recycling and within their, within their school budgets. So obviously, the municipalities are what comprise the school budget, so...
So we could look into that and get back to you on that.
Yeah.
Go ahead. So this process requires energy. How are you looking at renewable energies to cut your costs? Rooftops with solar, wind, geothermal with some of that composting? How do you use renewables to cut your costs and promote going green?
Sure. So waste to energy is renewable in Maine. We are a Class II renewable, and we get renewable energy credits that reward us. They actually reward us with tripling the rec for the energy that we are produced. That is through legislation. That does have a sunset in just a couple of years, and we will be advocating that that policy continues. So on the waste energy side, we are a renewable. And we are looking for other ways to expand our renewable capacity. One of the things that we've been trying very difficult, really hard on is, is on our capped landfill space is putting, I mean, to me, that's the best application for putting solar panels, because there's not much else you can do with that land. So those, it's a brown field that, you know, could be utilized in that capacity. Under the rules, we've had some challenges doing it and making it a financial, a favorable financial return. But we are, we actually are, we have a contract to establish a farm on top of the landfill cell. But we've ran into some challenges with the cluster studies associated with transmission.
If I may, so communities have their own old landfills. Portland has put solar on top of their landfills. If you collaborate with communities on landfills that, historic landfills that may not be part of your program, but you collaborate to include more communities in a potential solar or renewable energy program, you might get cost-effectiveness by efficiencies of scale by expanding it to not only putting solar on your rooftops, but the rooftops of other buildings in the towns that are members or the landfills that are in other towns that are historical, landfills just sitting there absorbing sun but not producing any energy. This might help tip the scale to make it more favorable by expanding it. So I'm asking you to think out of the box, as well as including things like school districts again, to think out of the box to expand your renewable approach so that you can get better efficiencies of scale.
We're definitely interested in solar, and so there's no doubt about it. And if we can expand it to our communities, a lot of our communities have already developed solar on their landfills. And, but we're interested, and if we can get an economy scale, we're certainly interested. One of the, one of the program elements that have been challenging to us is the cap on a 5-megawatt project. And that limits the availability for solar on their landfill.
Actually, going to open up for public comments at this time.
Sure.
So if anybody has questions, this is your chance. Go ahead.
Can I talk to you?
Um, you have to come up to my mic.
All right, I'm coming. Slowly. Give you all time to breathe.
Izzy Higgins, 215 Bonny Eagle Road.
You want a chair, you want a chair while you're talking?
Oh, no, 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 I'm fine, thank you. Once I'm up, I'm good. We have a, I'm a member of the recycle committee here, and it has pained me to no end to see over the years how people just toss stuff. And they can't be bothered with, you know, some people are very meticulous about separating and recycling and others just, it all goes in the solid waste. We have a program for our, for limited food waste through Garbage to Garden. And you, you, EcoMaine does food waste. Is there, you know, is there a way? We don't really get a great benefit other than reducing the wet stuff in our solid waste from the current program, because it's very limited and very small and we don't have trash pickup. Is there a way that as a member, either contract or owner, we would be able to incorporate that type of program without curbside pickup? Because it doesn't look like that's something that's going to happen anytime real soon.
Sure. So I think that we have, for the last seven, we started our food waste organics program seven years ago. We have been taking food waste through that program. We take some food waste from Garbage to Garden too. And so we offer a subsidized reduced tipping fee for food waste. So right now, commercial waste is $110 a ton, food waste is $55 a ton. So that's strategic to provide an incentive. Quite frankly, I'd love to make it zero, to really incentivize it, but you got to pay for it. So our board of directors basically decided to go with that level of subsidy. We have a long way to go with food waste, it's a huge opportunity with half of the waste stream is still organic material. So I appreciate what you're saying. It's just still, that programs, those programs are still in their infancy and they are costly. But they're growing and I think that'll continue. Because that's where the low-hanging fruit literally is, is in food waste. And you're seeing the grants that are available for food waste recovery programs are really becoming more and more popular, and they're larger grants as well. So we hope to participate in that grant funding. And that's another thing that being an owner community, you'll have an advantage with, is participating in those grants. We just recently got a grant, a $2 million grant for education and outreach for expanding recycling programs in multifamily homes. Because we feel like that's a missing piece. We're not capturing the amount of recyclables that we would in a traditional single-family home. And whether they maybe, maybe they don't have a basement, maybe they don't have a garage, maybe they just don't have the space, whatever the case may be, we want to go after those tons, and we feel like that's going to be advantageous to us. So hopefully, that grows, but that's just an example. But food waste, we're all in it and it's only going to grow.
One other question, how many, do you have a breakdown of how many of your member, member communities, owner or otherwise, do not have curbside pickup? Because that's always a, you know, I mean, when you compare us with the communities around us who are owners, and then there's Buxton who has their own, they do their own thing. They have their own composting, they do, you know, they do it their way and it works for them. But they do have curbside pickup and have had curbside pickup for many years. So that would be, do you have an idea of who is and who isn't?
Oh, yeah, we know, and we are happy to share that with you. You had mentioned this graph here, one graph that is not included, which I should have included, and that's the recycling rate. So we have the recycling rate for every community, and you can see, you know, because, you know, Portland's way up there, but that's because they're larger than any other community, so they obviously have more recyclable materials. But you really, we ought to be honing in on the recycling rate. What proportion of the MSW is actually being recovered through the recycling program? And that is critical, and we're happy to share that with you as well. As far as the curbside collection, I've been in the industry for 35 years, working with communities to develop programs. You'll never get to curbside collection if you don't include a very important variable. And that's the cost of getting it from the home to the transfer station. And what I have found is, that's a cost that the consumer bears. If you don't include that cost, you'll never get to curbside. Because you're excluding an important piece of the equation. That's my opinion, and when I've seen programs being developed, that's what I have seen. And that's why I offer it up, because it's a real cost. As far as, you know, the curbside programs going forward, you know, we have communities that do very well with curbside. We have communities that don't do so good with curbside. There's other variables besides the bag that impacts recycling. Do they have a recycling container? You know, that helps to participate in recycling program. What's the outreach look like? And it goes at variable after, are the containers properly marked? So there's a whole host of things that go into improving recycling rates. And maybe not everybody, and the state goal is 50%, we're not there yet, but we're close. On average, in our communities, we're over 30%, which is why I use the 30% figure. I think that's very doable, but even if you could double your rate and get to 20, maybe that's what you shoot for first.
And one other thing that would be an interesting comparison is places like Westbrook, where they have the containers and the trucks that go around and automatically dump both recyclables and solid waste versus Portland, which I think has a mixed thing. They do have, they have paper bag.
They have paper bag, they have two trucks, yeah.
They have a recyclable containers, right?
They do, yeah.
Anyway, that would be another interesting comparison figure to have.
I mean, the industry is moving away from manual collection, so, you know, the days are fewer and fewer with somebody riding on the back, an employee riding on the back of a garbage truck. Most of the regional and larger haulers have already shifted to fully automated collection. Automated collection has been around for 30 years, so it's really nothing new. It's just been slow because you have to make those investments. But eventually, you're going to see, except for, you know, there's some, there's some unique situations out there and they'll still be around, especially the owner-operator types can probably still offer those types of programs. But there's going to be fewer and fewer, there's going to be less and less competition. And that's going to drive up costs. And let's face it, labor is at a premium these days, and it's going to become too expensive. And so we saw a lot of communities switch to fully automated collection, Wyndham being one of them, they're in the midst of it right now. They went fully automated simply because the costs were going up significantly on manual collection. You just can't do it anymore.
Thanks for letting me get my nickel's worth while I was up here.
Is there any other questions for, comments from the public? Mr. Cross, Mr. Brooks, you just came in, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr., I know. Mr. Cross, you want to say anything?
John Cross, Public Works. The biggest thing that I can also think of that you mentioned during our previous meeting is that when our 20-year contract was established, we, the town gambled and won with recycling. That's not a change if we do that, isn't that correct? Kevin?
Yes, you signed, markets were favorable at that point in time. We had a whole lot of newspaper coming in, and it's kind of like when you sign on a mortgage rate. You know, you signed at the right time. You know, I think that the blueprint for recycling has changed since then. And whether, you know, whether you're a partner with EcoMaine or whatever other company you decide to do business with, we've all changed the blueprint because nobody will take the risk on the recyclable markets like we did before. And the national sword, which is when, when the main markets, if I could just expand on this, because I think it's important. When the main markets for paper died and went away, we were reliant on China to pick up the pieces, and they did. And everything went to China, and they were paying three times what the domestic markets were buying paper for. And everything, you know, they were back hauling, they were shipping product here and back hauling all this material, and they took every ounce of it. But eventually, they said enough is enough, we're not taking the world's recyclable and trash materials, and they put a stop to it. And when they put that stop to it, markets just plummeted to below zero, where we were paying 70 and 80 dollars a ton to get rid of our paper because we had to ship it to markets that in some cases were either far away or were just plain expensive. That has changed around some, but the bottom line is, nobody's willing to take the risk on the market. And that's why I said, the market's the market. If you can get the market today, the market's almost paying for itself. That's a good thing, but it may not do that tomorrow.
When we signed 20 years ago, we paid zero for recycling. I don't know what the current rate is, do you know?
130.
130, so that's going to be a drastic change for the town in the near future. So that's why that EPR is going to be very valuable to the town because right now, like I said, we're not getting charged for it, but we're gonna. And when our contract expires with that, it's something that I think the council should think about for the future of that.
Yeah, because the EPR will get you most of it back.
Right.
There's no other comments or questions from the public? I'll, one more question, Mr. Deacon.
Well, I may have more than one question. This is the council workshop, and I hope you afford me the full opportunity to express my very important comments.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So what are the tipping fees and how do they differ between the types of membership?
Sure. So again, it's kind of like when, timing is everything. And when communities signed on at different points, it's a market-driven activity. And so, you know, over the, I've been here for 20 years. And back 20 years ago, we had, you know, the market rate for trash was, you know, probably 30, 40, 50 dollars a ton at times. And then at times in the summer, it would cycle up. One of the challenges we have in Maine is we have a lot of trash in the summer and we have not enough trash in the winter. And so it really does cycle by the season. And that's hard for the management of waste materials because you're getting it all, I mean, I can't turn off the waste. You know, in the middle of summer, right now, we're getting inundated with waste. And we can't say no, we got to keep taking it. So, you know, sometimes that's a challenge. But today's rates probably fluctuate between a low of 80 and a high of 130.
So of the owners, they all pay different rates depending upon when they sign their contracts?
The owners right now are all the same, and they're all at, because the owners have chose to charge all of them themselves the same. And so they're all at 97.50 per ton.
So if we're not an owner, then the contracts all vary depending upon when they sign?
That's right. And just to give you a comparison, today's price that we're offering is 125.
Okay, and now, our transfer station is many years old. It may be designed incorrectly, the machinery is getting old, potentially wearing out. Do you have any way to assist us in making our transfer station more efficient, effective, or somehow more economical to operate?
We're happy to help you, and really, it's more sharing, you know, what other communities have done. I'm sure you've been out there looking at other communities' transfer stations, but happy to help in that regard. And, you know, different communities have done it different ways. I've visited a lot of transfer stations. There's pros and cons to every one of them. And, you know, it's one of those things, you know, return on investment. You know, you can only, you know, afford so much sometimes, and you have to look at what kind of return you get. So we're happy to help. I'm sure you have a capable staff who has visited other transfer stations as well. But through the stations as well, but through the combination, we're here to help.
Mr. Cross.
I can speak on our tipping fees. So in 2007, we started at $70 a ton. We're currently at a rate of $110 a ton as of today's market for the tipping fee. There is a cap that it can be increased in the contract per year, which I believe is 7%, but it's usually a 2% to 3% increase that I've seen consistently over the time for the solid waste.
We, John and I have also reached out to other communities and trying to get a ballpark price on transfer stations, curbside pickup, so we'll put together, we're getting the PowerPoint presentation, so we'll share it with all the council, and we'll put together our report for everyone to have, and we'll have definitely more time for Q and A for everyone, too.
When I, I went through and did the budgets for that, if you looked at, I think gray is our most comparable to the way we're set up. They're almost at 1.1 million dollars, I believe our operating budget was 980 through that, but if you look, I mean, also our recycling rate's down, so it's one of those things that, could we get more money back from the EPR for our recycling rate increases? It's gonna be in all the cost analysis of how it works out.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could just comment, one of the things I think the town should consider, and I know it's, it's probably a hot topic, sounds like it's a hot topic, but in your review, remember that the cost of collection on the recycling side is eligible for reimbursement. It is not eligible for reimbursement if the, if the consumer or the resident has to transport their own recyclable and solid waste materials to the transfer station. So that is a dynamic, I think, that the town should probably weigh as to whether that's a pro or a con for the residents of the town of Standish. But just keep that in mind, because it's a big cost that you would, that you would not be eligible for unless you provided that service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add something to you regarding EPR policy? And this goes back to Councilor Deacon's, my name's Bee, Bee Tris Johnson from EcoMaine. But this goes back to your question about the older infrastructure at the transfer station, and just one other benefit of the EPR policy that's going through is that there's an expected, it's expected that there are gonna be funds accumulating within the stewardship fund that's going to be reimbursing these communities, and there's discussion of these funds being allocated to communities that opt in through grants to bolster their recycling programs at transfer stations as well as their education programs. So that, there could be some funds being allocated through the EPR program to help with infrastructure at your new, your recycling facility.
Thank you.
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Please.
I liked the comment you made about money being available, $2 million, was it, where you said, in grants?
Education.
For education in particular.
Yes, sir.
Why, why aren't we working harder for that? I don't know what to do with the lobster shells when I had a potty or something like that.
Yep, so...
Another thing, I'll do it, I've got three more years to go, and the thing is, I'd like to see you come with something where you separate each one of those that you talked about. I'm just saying, I like what you're doing.
Thank you, and our outreach team is available, and we will certainly make them available and be, we like to say we're everywhere, and if we're not in your space, let us know where you are, and we'll come to you.
They're actually coming to our safety fair here at Town Hall, so we'll hope to educate for that.
I could make one last comment. I would encourage you to reach out to communities with regional school districts, because they're all over the state, and every town is concerned about their school district budget. And if there are ways for school districts to save money by involving themselves with this program in partnership perhaps with their individual towns or groups of towns, SAD six, if it were a single city in Maine, would be the fourth-largest city by population, which would put us number four in that orange and blue chart, even without including the schools. So there's a significant amount that can be gained by collaborating with school districts, and I would urge you to rethink your relationship to include regional school districts and towns that have regional school districts to collaborate together. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will get back to the town manager on the question about school district waste, we'll confirm what's in the rule. Again, the rules are up to change, but we will confirm what was in the proposed rule as far as school districts go, so you have that information.
One of the many good things that EcoMaine does in our, in Standish is they go, they come every year to the elementary schools and do presentations to the younger kids. And as, and I believe the theory in that is that if you get the kids, you're gonna get the parents, more likely. So there, there is that kind of educational outreach that's been going on for some time. But I don't really, I'm also not real sure how the waste at the school is integrated, so I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Maury. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Is there any other items this evening? Nope. Then make a motion to adjourn? Fill them out. All in favor? Adjourned. Thank you.